This 15th October 2025, City Council Meeting. Mr. Short, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Short. If you wish to speak at any of the public hearings or citizen comment period, please sign up on the sheets in the back of chambers. Item two is adoption of the meeting agenda. It's a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Slow. Thank you, Mr. Comby. All in favor of many agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item three matters from the mayor. The Vice Mayor, Councilman Wood, and I were present. Jeremy, were you there for the 50,000 T-Mobile? Okay, so we were at the presentation of the $50,000 T-Mobile Hometown Grant that was given to our EDA folks. This grant supports the Virginia Streets Arts Festival. And so we'll have some artwork going up on some of our buildings in the spring to celebrate the art festival in 2026. So congratulations to our folks at EDA and the work that they've done to get those grants. I attended the Comprehensive Plan Steering Group Meeting last night. And so we're going to have our second public engagement on 19 November from 5:00 to 7:30 at the high school. The first engagement was very successful. And so we're looking for some good things. We've had over 500 surveys returned so far. So we're looking for some more. And we'll be, we'll have a table out at the next two farmers market to get some information off of folks as well. Leslie, did you want to add anything to that? Okay, we have a couple of stakeholders meetings at the end of the month as well. So that'll be out there and available for those that are interested. Item four matters from council members. Anybody? Okay. Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item six. Item six is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance rezoning certain properties addressed as 1200, 1100, and 1044 West Main Street, 325 Pine Avenue, 1017 12th Street, and Zero Poplar Avenue owned by the Waynesboro School Board from RG5 General Residential to RS5 Traditional Residential and Local Business LB to CB Central Business. Ms. Tate.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. There are three items on the agenda this evening that deal with the high school property. And these three items are needed to kind of continue the high school project to create an addition on to the high school. So the first this evening is a rezoning of the property. 1200, 1100, and 1044 West Main Street, 325 Pine Avenue, and 1017 12th Street, and Zero Poplar Avenue, all the high school property. I'm sure you're aware, the location here kind of outlines that property and the school facilities that exist there. So the nature of the request is the applicants have applied for a rezoning of the school board and city of Waynesboro properties. It includes the high school and also associated facilities, the Waynesboro City Schools Administration Building and the building that houses V-Pass. The current zoning of the property, some is RG5, which is general residential, and there is some that is RS5 Traditional Residential and some local business. And the request would be to rezone the entire property to central business. So why is it needed? The rezoning is needed to proceed with the second phase of the high school renovation. And what the second phase will include is a one-story media center, three-story classroom wing, a three-story connector building, one-story gym, and athletics complex. So the current zoning does not have enough flexibility in the area and dimensional standards, specifically regarding the building height and the setbacks that are needed for that addition. So here, this is just a more zoomed-in aerial of the property outlined. So the current zoning, there's a portion that's local business, which is kind of our small-scale commercial uses. There's some general residential, which is the medium-density residential district, which includes various dwelling types, single-family attached, detached townhouses, and multiplexes. And then there's also a bit of traditional residential, which is small lot neighborhoods that are primarily single-family detached dwellings. And the proposed zoning would be to go to central business, which is really our retail office and residential core of downtown is zoned central business. It does encourage kind of a more intense development and pedestrian activity and provides for our vital downtown. But as I mentioned earlier, the rezoning in this instance is to create the flexibility needed for the building height and the setbacks related to the school addition. So you can see here that the limited business zoning of the property is here along this kind of small portion parking lot along Main Street. And then RG5 covers kind of the remaining portion of the property. This is the future land use map that does identify the property as institutional and recognizing that it's a school and has been a school. But it is important to note that the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map does show the downtown core area extending all the way up to this and kind of creates that continuity with the zoning that's being proposed. So RG5 and also the limited business districts restrict building heights to 35 feet. In the existing high school building, the current three-story classroom wing is approximately 50 feet tall. And the hope is to continue that height with the addition, hence why the rezoning is needed. And the central business districts permits buildings up to 100 feet tall, although that's not the desire of the school. They have said that it would be 50 feet if not, you know, a little bit higher, just depending on certain apparatus or maintenance equipment that might need to be added. So they have offered a voluntary proffer just to limit the building height to no more than 70 feet, although that is still higher than they envisioned going just to allay any concerns there. So you'll see that this additional wing would match the existing height of the building and then also be fairly close to Main Street. And that's another reason for the rezoning is the flexibility with the setbacks. So RG5 has a front setback requirement of 20 feet. And the limited business district has a setback, front setback requirement of 10 feet. The central business district does not have a setback. It actually has a minimum build-to line that requires the building to set right against the property line. And so the second request this evening would be a conditional use permit to modify that build-to line, since the concept plans for the new high school building indicate that it would be, you know, anywhere from a three-foot setback for that first-story media center. And, you know, potentially, although these might shift as engineering continues, a 17-foot setback for the new three-story classroom wing. So it provides that flexibility in this zoning district. These just kind of show some of the plans of the existing building and the renovation and kind of how that relates to the existing facilities and the street. This is just another view and a rendering that was provided by the schools. So another thing to note is that our central business district does not have any type of parking requirements because the district is intended to be more dense by nature and less car-dependent and more walkable. Although the high school is located a half a mile from that downtown core. And certainly, the schools want and need parking. So they are also proffering to maintain the existing 247 parking spaces that they have currently. So that would eliminate any concerns that might arise with that. The Planning Commission does recommend approval of the rezoning with the voluntary proffers. And those are that the uses of the parcels will be limited to Waynesboro City Schools and their associated uses. Building height would be limited to 75 feet, and a minimum of 247 parking spots would be provided on site. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for staff?
Thanks.
I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak, sir.
I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance rezoning the school board-owned properties addressed as 1200, 1100, and 1044 West Main Street, 325 Pine Avenue, 1017 12th Street, and Zero Poplar Avenue to the CB Central Business zoning designation?
I gladly make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slow. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? This ordinance will be considered at the next regular business meeting on October 27. Item seven is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance granting a conditional use permit exempting the Waynesboro High School project from the build-to-line requirement in the central business district. Property is located at 1200, 1100, 1044 West Main Street, 325 Pine Avenue, 1017 12th Street, and Zero Poplar Avenue. Ms. Tate.
So again, related to the high school property and the ability for that renovation project, in addition to continue, if rezoned to central business, which we just covered, there will need to be a conditional use permit to modify the build-to line since they don't plan to set directly up against the sidewalk in the property line and would have some green space and setback, as would be kind of in keeping with the uses in that vicinity. So the applicant has applied for the rezoning to central business that we just discussed. In central business, the buildings are required to have a 70% minimum build-to line. So 70% of the building would need to meet that requirement, and in this case, it would not. So applicants have requested modify the build-to-line requirement, and certainly it would be contingent upon the approval of the rezoning. So what is a build-to line? It's the area running along the property line where the building facade must be built. So the intention of them is to create a consistent street wall and frame the street and to kind of create an aesthetically pleasing environment, something that you see often in downtown core areas. Then downtown blocks between Church Street and Arch Avenue certainly have that. The build-to line definition refers to the front and street-side property line to which a minimum percentage of the building facade along the front yard and street-side yard, if any, must be built. Just an image showing what that looks like in practice in our downtown core area. This is just the section of the ordinance that identifies that build-to line in the central business zoning district. This kind of shows a street view, really just to show because this is farther away from the downtown core, there aren't buildings pushed up in that vicinity. So that a conditional use permit to modify this build-to line is in keeping with the area. Again, this shows that some, they vary from how close or far back they're set, but that there is not that kind of dominant wall that exists in the downtown core. And these are just showing this kind of area here, obviously, would not be needing that build-to-line requirement, although close. It does have a setback in some landscaping area. So the Planning Commission does recommend approval with the following condition. And at the Planning Commission, we did have a couple that had some concerns about the school properties that front on Pine Avenue. And if, because they were proposed to also be rezoned to central business to create consistency across the high school campus. But if in the future they were added on to or were torn down and something new was built, the couple was hoping that there would be a setback for them, obviously, that would not be up to the build-to line. So the Planning Commission did recommend that any new building or an addition on or to an existing building that fronts on Pine would be no closer to Pine Avenue than the existing structures. So modifying the build-to line, but also recognizing that new buildings fronting Pine Avenue would kind of fall in line with where they exist today. Dr. Castle and some of his engineering representatives were at the Planning Commission meeting, and they seemed comfortable with that language.
Any questions, sir? Staff? I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance granting a conditional use permit exempting the Waynesboro High School project from the build-to-line requirement in the central business district? Property is located at 1200, 1100, 1044 West Main Street, 325 Pine Avenue, 1017 12th Street, and Zero Poplar Avenue?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
For discussion afterwards.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Short. Discussion?
Yeah, just as it relates to the proffer, I think, while appreciated, it's just, I mean, those structures are set back pretty far away from Pine as they are now. And I think should redevelopment of either the V-Pass building or the central office. I mean, I think arguably bringing them more consistent with what's on the other side of the road creates more of a street line perspective, a more consistent scale than what's out there now.
I kind of share the same thought process, is that it's pretty far back and you'd be hamstringing yourself potentially. Now, if they proffered something like, you know, 15 or 20 feet or even no further than the existing parking lot where you wouldn't develop anything, not necessarily where the building's footprint is, but where the already constructed footprint is, then that would give you a little more leeway than saying exactly where the building is. You can't move it 10 feet forward when that might make more sense and still not affect the layout of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want, you know, those in the neighborhood to have an expectation on something that would, I mean, if we're going to set the expectations, again, there's no money, there's no project, there's nothing in the foreseeable future that would impact these properties. And I guess it could always be undone down the road. But just as a practice, I almost think that if we're trying to keep it in context with the neighborhood setting, it would be better, that block would be better served if the buildings were closer to the road than how they are now. But again, just for discussion, I guess, as we do want it for a couple of weeks.
And just to be clear, I know we started with the rezoning and then switched to the conditional use permit. This is just a recommended condition, so by the Planning Commission, but certainly you could approve the conditional use permit without the condition.
Okay. All right. This ordinance will be considered at the next regular business meeting. Item eight is upon application by the Waynesboro School Board to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance closing and vacating identified rights-of-way on the Waynesboro High School campus. Ms. Tate.
Okay, this is the last one related to the high school and hopefully the simplest. So it is to close and vacate right-of-way that's owned by Waynesboro City that is within the school complex. Some of it is, has buildings across it currently, and others would need to be impacted related to the addition. So it is in a couple different areas, and I will show you a map. But it would be to close and vacate approximately a 10-foot strip that's along West Main Street. And then to close and vacate approximately 8,327 square feet of an alley, which is described as being a 10-foot alley between tax map 4431 and 443H. And then there's another 10-foot alley between tax maps 443G and 443F. And then finally, there's a 20-foot public right-of-way located between 4431 and 443 Lots H and G. So this yellow, these yellow strips through here show the right-of-way that is requesting to be closed and vacated. You can see here, the existing building crosses it mostly unimproved, except for a parking area, which obviously would remain open. This is kind of what started the request, this strip along Main Street, this 10-foot strip. Because obviously, that affects the buildable space that the school has then to expand. And so the city does not have any concerns with maintaining this 10-foot strip. And so the request would be to vacate and close all of these yellow strips to help facilitate the high school project. And this is just the official plat, a draft of that plat that has been submitted for review for that property. And then if you'll remember, the city did appoint the three viewers to go out and review and see if closing or vacating those right-of-ways would cause adverse impacts to the traveling public. And their determination was that it would not. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
No known utilities along the Main Street?
No, not that I'm aware of. We had Public Works review and did its normal review, and there weren't concerns there with that strip.
This is a silly question, but would the 10-foot right-of-way prevent from building up to the property line so that they could only build up to the right-of-way line?
Yeah, so I mean, that's not owned by them. But, and so when they went out to look at it, like, oh, there's a 10-foot strip that's not owned by us, so we would have to be set off that rather than, and they need all the space they can get. So, and the city does not.
Yeah, I know. I just meant with the rezoning, they have to build up to the property line.
Sure. Yeah, it was impacting it.
Roundabout, roundabout way.
Multiple ways, yeah.
Fair enough.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance closing and vacating identified rights-of-way on the Waynesboro High School campus?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slow. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? This ordinance will be considered at the next regular business meeting. Item nine is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow a multifamily building in the central business district, Miller &amp; Associates applicant. Specific address is 620 West Main Street, the former General Wayne Hotel. Ms. Tate.
So this is my last one for the evening, and it is not related to the high school. It is a request for a conditional use permit for 620 West Main Street, tax map number 45-2-58, known to Waynesboro as the General Wayne Hotel. So I know you're aware, but I like to review these as we work through conditional use permits and what their purpose is and what the code says about them. So conditional use permits allow for a case-by-case review of uses which may be, but are not always compatible with neighboring uses. And sometimes, conditions may come into place with these permits. In order to approve a conditional use permit, the council should find that the permit or the use is consistent with good zoning practice, that it's not adverse to the health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the area than those uses that are allowed by right without a conditional use permit, and no more detrimental economically or otherwise to property improvements within the surrounding area. So here, along West Main Street, the property is outlined in red. You can see it sets adjacent to the Good Shepherd Anglican Church and the Reynolds-Hamrick Funeral Home. Here is an image of the property. So the nature of the request is to allow a multifamily building in that zoning district. And the reason it requires a conditional use permit is if they were to have business on the ground floor and apartments above, that's allowed by right in our central business district. But their intention is to not have a business component and to renovate and rehabilitate that structure into apartments. So they did go before the Planning Commission at a prior meeting for a certificate of appropriateness. There are some very minor portions of the building that would need to be torn down, a kitchen in the rear. And so that was reviewed by the Planning Commission, but the plan is to renovate the General Wayne Hotel for anywhere from 38 to 45 market-rate apartments. And they'd be a mix of efficiencies and one and two-bedroom units. This map shows the zoning. So you can see that central business districts continues out until it hits the limited business zoning here. So in, within the downtown core, although a bit farther away from some of the kind of more downtown commercial uses. And this shows the future land use map that does designate this area as downtown core. There is no required parking in the central business district. But the applicant, obviously recognizing this as a residential use, does plan to provide some parking. They have noted that they plan to lease 20 spaces in the lot across the street. There's hopefully going to also be some parking provided along the alley side. And then staff was able to kind of count some additional parking that could be found on the street at West Main, Federal, and Maple. But there is no zoning requirement for parking. And really, the intention behind that is you want a thriving downtown where people are out walking, and you want to kind of capitalize on your space that you have and use it for buildings and uses. It's just another aerial of the property, and this shows the lot across the street. Staff noted that there would be minimal traffic impacts, given the existing street network. There's adequate public infrastructure and minimal impact to schools. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the request. And I do believe the applicant is here to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Is there applicant?
Jesse White. Hello, nice to meet everybody. I'm Jesse White, and I'm a developer and a partner in Miller &amp; Associates. We are headquartered in Richmond, Virginia, but we've got a satellite office in Stanton. And we're responsible for all the renovation work that was done at the old Western State Hospital, which is now the Blackburn Inn, which is a 49 hotel key boutique hotel. We're in the process of adding 43 more rooms in a vacant building on that campus. We've built 50-plus condos. We've built 100-plus apartments on that site. There's a spa and conference center, so there's a little bit of commercial there as well. And then we've also done a number of projects throughout the downtown in Stanton. We did the Beverly Hotel. We did the Stan Seem Laundry. And we did the Arcadia Building most recently on Beverly Street. I think that that adds up to about another 100 units. Our specialty is we buy buildings that are white elephants. They're vacant. They've, you know, the Arcadia had caught on fire 20 years ago, and nobody had done anything with it. We buy them, and we restore them, and we turn them into multifamily housing. We create workforce housing, is what I would call it. You know, we're not the highest price point in the world. We're not the lowest. We're trying to serve working people that need a place to live that's new, safe, comfortable, and also economical. So we're in Richmond. We're in Stanton. We're also down in Elizabeth City, North Carolina. We're renovating a cotton mill into 112 apartments right now. And we are very interested in Waynesboro. We think you guys have a great city. And it's got a lot going for it with growth and a beautiful downtown and the river and good governance. So we're really excited about this opportunity. We've got the building under contract. And the minute we get the conditional use permit, that's when we'll really start going. But we've got designs and plans in place. And, you know, a lot of people like to overpromise, and then they underdeliver. We underpromise, we overdeliver. So, you know, we say what we're going to do. We're going to, if, with your consent and approval, we're going to buy this building. We're going to turn it into great apartments. I think everybody's going to be happy. We're going to add to real estate tax base, more housing for your residents. And hopefully, more opportunities will present themselves, and we can rinse and repeat and become more of a long-term partner here. And one last thing I'll add is- And one last thing I'll add is, we are not a merchant builder. What a merchant builder is, is they come in, they buy the building, they renovate it, they fill it up, and then they sell it to some investor. We don't do that. We put our own money into it, we're the owners, the developers, the general contractors, the property managers, and the maintenance. And we build them like we're gonna own them forever, because that's our plan. We don't enter a market and exit it. We're, we're here to be a long-term partner. So with that said, I'll open up to anybody else or any questions that anybody might have.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Okay.
What's your rental range? What are you anticipating?
It's really hard to say, because we won't deliver these apartments for eighteen months, twenty-four months, but we do have a website, Monroe Properties Website, that's our property management company, and we've got a lot of rentals in Stanton and Richmond. This is not Stanton or Richmond, so they will be different, but, you know, if you want a general idea of what we have to offer, I would look at our website. But, you know, to give you an idea, again, this is in North Carolina, so I don't, you know, it's not exactly comparable, but the deal that we're doing right now, we're getting to the tail end, and we're now putting together our rents, and we have efficiency apartments, we have one-bedrooms, we have two-bedrooms, and we have units that are at as low as eight-seventy-five, and we have some of our very large ones that are sixteen-hundred. So we're trying to, you know, we're trying, if this is the rental market, we're trying to hit the middle, and we want to have lots of different offerings for different folks. And we want our tenants and your residents of, of Waynesboro to be happy. We want you guys to, you know, rent and stay and be happy, and, you know, it's, a lot of folks will build apartments, and they'll try to raise the rents, or they won't, you know, provide the services that we do, and people leave every year, and that costs more money, and that's not our business model. We're.
Thank you. For the folks that are listening, can you define efficiencies, just very quickly?
Yes, an efficiency is like a studio apartment, it's, there's not a specific bedroom, so they can be, you know, they could be four hundred square feet, they could be eight hundred square feet, it really depends on the unit, especially in these old buildings, but there's no designated bedroom.
Thank you.
Do you have a, do you have a potential start and finish date in mind or range?
Yes, so my goal, we have applied for some environmental cleanup money, the building is full of asbestos. We're going to proceed with this project, with or without that, but of course, we want to try to tap into the environmental cleanup grant. I am shooting to start in April, and, you know, we'll probably get in there, assuming we get the council use permit and we get our building permits and everything, start doing demo work probably at the top of the year, and then I really want to start in April, and we'll be done by the following April.
Do you have any idea on impact on traffic on Main Street or for Fishburg Military School behind you?
I don't think there's gonna be an impact, you know, it was once a hotel with visitors, and we're gonna be a, a multifamily building, and it's already in a downtown with corridors nearby, and we've got the parking lot across the street in which we're gonna have a twenty-year lease. So I, I do not foresee a problem with the amount of units that we're gonna have, I mean, the Main Street's a pretty main corridor, I don't think it's gonna be.
My concern is more with the demo and construction.
Oh, no, we're, we've got a good team, we're gonna lock that site down, we've worked and, we, the project we just did in Stanton, downtown Stanton, was the Arcadia Building, it's one-nineteen East Beverly Street, it is right smack dab downtown, the building is on the lot lines, and we had a work-in-street permit and closed off part of the sidewalk, and we renovated that whole building into twenty-four units in about ten months, and it's fully leased up, it's a really wonderful project, and we had, I don't think we had a single complaint, we're, we've got a really good construction team, we're not gonna get in anybody's way.
I was familiar with a couple of your projects in Stanton, Stan Seem Laundry, you know, was one of those where we heard that it was bought, was being converted, next thing, I know people were living in it, so.
Right.
There was minimal impact, I just hope we have the same result here.
Right.
On Main Street and for the school and the funeral home around it.
I'll, you know, problems for you are problems for me. I don't want problems, I've got kids at home, I don't need any more problems, so I'm here to make life as easy as possible.
Is there the potential to increase the number of parking spots? Say, you know, forty units with the proximity to the school and everything, if everybody had a single vehicle or two vehicles, would you say twenty, you had a lease for twenty parking spots?
That's what we have negotiated. I don't want to commit to anything, because I, you know, that's not part of the purchase, we're not buying the parking lot, but again, you know, it, it's all about marketability. If, I want the apartments to be as hospitable, marketable, and economical as possible so that people want to live there. If you've got two cars, or you've got a car, and you don't want to rent my apartment because of that, that's my problem, so we don't have another lease in place, but before we hit the market leasing, we're gonna make sure that we've got accommodations for people in their cars.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
No one has signed up to speak. Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that we, did we actually open the?
We did not.
Okay.
I hereby open and close. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance granting the conditional use permit to allow a multifamily building in the Central Business, six-twenty West Main Street, formerly the General Wayne Hotel, Miller &amp; Associates applicant?
I'll, I'll make that motion, and I'd like to make that motion contingent upon the real estate transaction, whereas the Miller &amp; Associates acquires the property.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart Wood. In discussion, this ordinance will be considered at the next regular business meeting. Item ten is to consider authorizing city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding among the cities of Stanton and Waynesboro and the County of Augusta pertaining to a new animal shelter at one-zero-one-one Lee Highway in Verona. Apparently, there was a change to the MOU that has not been vetted by the staff, and considering that, Mr. Hamp, unless you have anything to add? I'd like to get a motion to table item ten until staff has reviewed the changes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Short, does there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Slow, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item ten will be tabled until the changes can be vetted. Okay. Item eleven is considering adopting a resolution of official intent to reimburse expenditures with proceeds from a borrowing, which is the wastewater project. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Lee, and good evening, members of council. Virginia's Department of Environmental Quality administers the Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. The city's been approved for a loan to fund improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, the amount of the loan is nine million forty thousand dollars with up to two million seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars in principal forgiveness. So the purpose of this resolution is any expenditures that we incur, expenses that we incur between now and if council chooses to take the loan out, we can reimburse those back to ourselves through the loan proceeds. This loan, or this resolution does not commit you to borrowing the money, and it does not commit, commit you to actually reimbursing them, reimbursing yourself, it just leaves that opportunity open. Just for council's awareness, if we do want to take advantage of the principal forgiveness and the loan, and it actually has a below-market rate interest as well, we do have to close on that loan by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. Our anticipation is the next ordinance, if adopted, would fund the engineering for that project, give us good pricing, or more accurate pricing on the project, and lead us to a position where we can make a decision on if we wanted to fund those, use net position, local net position, or use the borrowing to fund that project.
Did you say December twenty-twenty-eight?
Yes, sir. So these projects have, so we actually got approved for this loan about a year ago, and they have engineering built in, and things like that, they know it takes a couple years to, they're asking for these in concept phase.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Is there a motion to adopt a resolution of intent, reimburse expenditures with proceeds from a borrowing?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slow, does there a second?
I'm second.
Thank you, Mr. Short, any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? And I believe that goes to the, anything we have to do with that one?
This was good for tonight.
Okay. Item twelve is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating one million ten thousand to the sewer fund for engineering on the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Lee, so this is the companion ordinance to the previous resolution, the million and ten thousand dollars is for engineering on that wastewater treatment project. Again, you do have funds in your local net position that we can cover the engineering itself. The previous resolution gave us the option, though, if we would like, to recoup those funds into that position and take them on as a borrowing, we do have that option, and then obviously have the option to continue on with the project and borrow the funds later on, but this allows us to get to a point of borrowing.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick, any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance to appropriate the one million ten thousand for engineering for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. This ordinance will receive final consideration at the October twenty-seventh meeting. Item thirteen is to consider appointing an individual to the Economic Development Authority for a four-year term, ending August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine. Is there a motion to appoint Mary Sullivan to the EDA?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short, does there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have a five-zero. Item fourteen, communication correspondence calendar, Mr. Hamp?
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item fifteen, citizen comment?
Excuse me. Kellen Erwin.
You may be seated.
Jordan Fust. Thanks, Mayor Kenny Lee and the rest of the council. My name's Jordan Fust, I've been a member of this community since I was born. I run a business that operates here in Waynesboro, and, yeah, before coming here, I sat at, took a moment to compose my thoughts while sitting at Loth Springs just down the road from here, near the YMCA where Coach Spears taught me how to play ball. Waynesboro is a community with wonderful features, natural resources, and community members, we have vibrant tourism now that the river's been cleaned, and is centered around the South River. However, it feels that the city has chosen time and again to prioritize multinational corporations over the health and prosperity of these natural resources. It was only a hundred years ago that we gave Lithia Springs to DuPont, and look where that got us. They manufactured a wide variety of chemicals and textiles, and that left a major and devastating harm to the South River, and took years of litigation to finally force DuPont to clean up its mess in an attempt to restabilize the environment after massive amounts of mercury were dumped into the river. I'm not a passive bystander to the careless greed-fueled actions of DuPont. The company used asbestos in its structures, which was known to them to cause major health risks, and through litigation, my grandfather, who died of mesothelioma, was able to get compensation, which proves that DuPont was complicit in this action. He was a works engineer with DuPont and the head of maintenance. I fear that this council has voted again to allow this kind of behavior into our community. We've allowed Northrop Grumman to move in at Corner Springs, and Northrop, Northrop Grumman has a long history of polluting in communities where it's entered. Bethpage, New York is a horrific example, where they polluted groundwater with high amounts of TCE or tri-chloroethylene, among other chemicals, and it has taken years of litigation in that community to get any sort of compensation, and they're still battling it. I urge the members of this council, council to consider the future and the legacy you are leaving. If we are going to allow Northrop Grumman into our community, we must hold them accountable, we must do water quality testing, we must have a plan in place to deal with the pollution. They're making weapons that are used in war, used to kill children, used in surveillance, and I know this to be a very wholesome community and a place with lots of spiritually centered people, and it's hard to imagine that any of you would want to support war, death, destruction, and that's what Northrop Grumman is bringing to our community. I didn't get this in earlier, but I'd like to submit some documents to the council if that would be all right.
Sure.
Do I hand them to you, or?
Maybe the clerk.
Thank you.
What I've submitted is a, a spot. What I've submitted is a, a small booklet with various actions that Northrop Grumman has done that have caused major harm. Thank you very much for your time.
Carmen Cullen?
Good evening. My name is Carmen Cullen. I'm a homeowner here in Waynesboro. I'm here tonight because the place that should feel safest, my home, doesn't. Since moving in about a year ago, I'm faced with reoccurring issues with my driveway being blocked due to the way the development was designed and approved by the city. What should have been a simple matter of access has turned into daily worry about whether or not I'll be able to leave my home when I need to. A few weeks ago, that fear became reality. I had a medical complication that needed urgent care, but I couldn't get out. I was blocked in for nearly two hours, trapped in my own driveway, waiting for someone to come help me. It was terrifying. I've done everything I can to find a reasonable but cost-effective solution. I've reached out to Ms. Tate, Mr. Wood, and the rest of the planning commission. No one has provided me with a reasonable alternative to fix my situation that doesn't involve me selling my home, which was suggested by Mr. Wood, swapping it with someone else from the development, or spending tens of thousands of dollars to change the curbing. I purchased my home, trusting the cities, that the city's approved plan guaranteed safety and accessibility. I believe in this community and the people who serve it, but I also believe that no resident should feel unsafe or trapped in their own home. What I'm asking for is the city to step in, to possibly help revisit this design, to work with me to identify a real fix that doesn't cost me thousands of dollars. I wanna be able to come home and know that if something happens, I can get out. I love this city. I wanna keep feeling proud to call Waynesboro my home. But I need to know that my safety matters, and that the city won't prioritize its resources over my safety. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your service to this community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Dewan Bellamy?
Hello, council members. My name is Dewan Bellamy. I am a citizen of this community. Since I was born, I was born in Waynesboro Hospital. Um, I also own Bellamy Marketing and Consulting, and I also own Bellamy Moving and Hauling in the city. I come to you today with a troubling matter. Um, it was brought to my attention, because I'm also the deputy chairman of the Black Panther Party of Waynesboro, Virginia, that fifty-two students in our public school system are homeless or displaced from housing. That is unsettling to me, especially when we're bringing, like the gentleman said, multi-million dollar corporations into our city. And we have kids that are worried about where they're gonna live. I actually know a family that is in the hotel right behind this building with seven children. And social services told them that they cannot help them, because the father is involved. If the father wasn't involved, they would provide for them. But I know this man, and I know he's not gonna leave his children no matter what. And this almost brings tears to my eyes, because I was homeless as a child in this city. I lived in the hotel beside El Portos, and the hotel across the street from Autozone. I lived in my great-grandparents' house with no heat, no water, no lights, and went to Waynesboro High School every day. I know what that does to your mind. You can't focus. There's no way that you could get an education with those type of things on your mind. And as a child, you should not be worried about how to provide for your family. You should be worried about how your family is gonna provide for you. And so, I have come up with a comprehensive plan with charitable organizations, hopefully churches, community members, to get these children and their families off the street and into affordable housing, long-term, not short-term. So, I have a couple documents. I'm sorry that I don't have more. My printer decided that it was in charge today.
Thank you.
I'm very concerned about this, because it can only increase as the city becomes bigger, as we see. The community is growing. There's more businesses coming in. And so, I'm asking through community help, through the school, I mean, through, uh, city council, for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This plan that I have set in place, within twelve months, should eliminate child homelessness and family homelessness, homelessness in the city within, with a ninety percent, within ninety percent. It should be gone in twelve months with this plan that I've put in place. I know that is a lot to ask for. Who am I? I'm just a concerned citizen. I've been homeless as a kid. I've been homeless as an adult. I know how hard it is. I could, could not imagine being homeless with a child that needs my help. That would break me, that, I, that would make me resort to criminal activity and anything else I needed to, to provide for my family. And, uh, as someone who's done six years in the penitentiary for something that I did as a kid, wrong place, wrong time, wrong environment, homeless, I know what I resorted to. And I don't want these kids around here to resort to that. Because in this dark world that we're living in this day, these kids are our only light, our only ones. They're the only ones that are gonna change-
Thank you, sir.
-the way the world is today, and I thank y'all.
No one else has signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Item sixteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.